Okay, I think we're gonna get started this evening. And we'll start with Fletch and Lee. And I know we can do that.
Fletch, would you be to the flag of the United States of America? And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam President, I would like to make a motion to move public comment up to item number three before presenting school.
Support. I have an objection and a support to move public comment up. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Peddodong?
Aye.
Mr. Nolan?
Aye.
Mrs. Novak?
Aye.
Mrs. Putnam says aye. Motion carries. Okay, so we have Mr. Thorne for public comment this evening.
Good evening. My name is Tim Thorne. I'm the superintendent of Oxford Schools and I appreciate the opportunity to address the board. About a week or so ago, Oxford was hosting both their boys' and girls' basketball teams, all three levels, sort of a double, triple header, if you will. And it was also the kickoff event of our charity week at our high school. As a way to add a little excitement to that event, I made a friendly wager with Mr. Landry. And it was sort of like this. Whatever school won the most events, the opposing superintendent would attend their next school board meeting. As evident by my attendance tonight, your basketball team's got better. Both our freshman teams won, both your JV teams won, and both our CEP games came down in the final minute and you beat us on both games. So, congratulations. What I really want you to know too is that, you know, your student athletes were competitive. They handled themselves with poise. I also want you to know that your athletes and your fans helped us raise over a thousand dollars that night to go towards cancer. So, congratulations to your students, your fans, and also your excellent superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Thorne.
You guys are doing a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. Appreciate it. You know, Madam President, it's not like me to gloat, you know. I never, ever take the opportunity to instill the virtues of our fantastic competitors on the court. But I want to thank Tim for being so gracious in coming here. I'll have you know, the original bet was that the losing superintendent had to wear the opposing district's sweatshirt at the board meeting. To which I did not stipulate. I got a better idea. So, it was a friendly wager and the kids acquitted themselves very well. And I want to thank Tim personally. We've had a great relationship in my time as superintendent here and his time. Have you been in Oxford how many years now, Tim, as superintendent?
Superintendent five.
But Oxford has an employee for 20 years, right? So, Tim and I actually worked together when I was a teacher at Oxford. We go way back. He's a tremendous leader at Oxford. Really, really happy to have him as a partner to ourselves. So, thanks for making the trek all the way up here to the...
My pleasure.
Thank you. So, Superintendent Landry will be introducing what presents the school this evening?
Thank you, Madam President. It is my distinct pleasure to introduce Miss Stephanie Hedy, the director of our Kids and Company program. And she's going to be presenting tonight on goal number one. And I know Stephanie very well and I can tell you yet a shadow of a doubt that she is extremely excited to be here this evening.
And extremely nervous.
Well, I was trying to set you up, Steph, to where you get right past the nerves part. And you're killing my intro.
Sorry, Steph.
Please take over. We're excited to hear.
Thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to touch base with you guys on our Kids and Company preschool and childcare programs. First, I would like to make contact with one of our GSRP teachers for coming to join us today. All right, so a little bit of background on Kids and Company. Myself, I've been the director for four years, but with the LCS district as a paracole and Kids and Company staff for 10 years. A little bit of background on our programs, staff and students for the programs. Big Kids One, that's our toddler program. We have seven enrolled and three staff members there. Big Kids Two, three to five year olds, we have 21 enrolled and four staff members. Preschool threes, we have 18 students and two adults. Tuition four AM, we have 18 students and two adults. Preschool four PM, we have 13 students and four adults. Our GSRP program is a little bigger. We have three preschool programs for GSRP and that is a grant funded preschool program for youth students. We have 48 students and eight staff members. Our Big Kids sites, I don't know if you're familiar with our Big Kids sites, but that's our before and after school launch key. Four locations, four elevens, we have 130 students enrolled and 13 staff members. A little more about the background, summer camp program, it's a highlight of the summer. We don't have a pool to really compete with the rec center, but we still go on field trips weekly. The fire department comes and they like to spray the students out and then it gets really, really warm.
So, it's kind of like that.
Yeah. We also get to utilize the gym, the tech lab, and the playground at all times. This is the time for students and staff to meet new friends. Also a highlight is students that are not enrolled in the peer preschools, they enroll in our summer camp program. We also get free breakfast and lunch for the snow days. On average, last year, we had about 20 students each session on the snow days. Benchmark, 1.18. So, 80% of the peer community schools preschool age students will be proficient on the kindergarten readiness assessment, which is KRA. So, what will our teachers do? They will implement the best practice in reading and math, identify students who are at risk of not meeting the KRA standards, and providing 100% of parent strategies to help support at home. Data, this year, we just get checkpoint one, so at the end of October. But I also have up there last year's data. So, checkpoint one is late October, checkpoint two is middle of February. We do have six preschool programs that overall assess the data, which is three GSRP classrooms, tuition, and our ECSE students. How are the preschool staff supporting the district goals? We have professional development throughout the school year, which is KRA assessment, growth mindset, the growing brain. We just completed session one back in September. We will have session two in the middle of March. And that is through the ISB, which is for our family wide, that's our GSRP staff. We also do collaborations six times a year. And thank you, thank you, thank you so much for the guidance and support from our LCS learning coaches and the ISB staff. Kudos to you. Thank you so much. The PQWA preschool program quality assessment. It's an evaluation tool that assesses basic quality for every preschool program. There's three different areas that our PQWA looks for. Learning environment, teaching, learning, and adult interactions, child interactions, and curriculum and parental engagement. This is just for our GSRP programs. It doesn't go for our tuition preschool. Last year, all of our GSRP programs were scored in the high performance level for all three programs, or all three areas. Now, for that, I wanted to touch base a little bit on the high performance. But you guys might ask, what does high performance mean? The learning environment is rated on a scale between 15 and 60. The high performance rate is 43 to 60. All three of our programs, our classrooms were rated between 55 and 60. So, that's high performance. The teaching, learning, and adult child interaction, that's rated between 40 and 160 points. High performance is 111 to 160. Our performance level was between 150 and 160 in that level. The last one, the curriculum and parent engagement, rating scale was 14 to 56. The high performance is 36 to 56. And they were between 15 and 56 for all three preschool classrooms. Childcare program highlights. Will and Warner Childcare and Preschool Programs, we have a four star rating with a great start to quality. That's four licenses. Our Big Kids programs and Will and Warner preschool, we renew our license every two years. And as I'm nervous right now, I'm nervous when I do inspections and renewals, because I want to make sure we get to the highest level possible. And we've been flying by in flying colors for every preschool inspection. Big recognition of our Big Kids program. We had LCS employee, Crystal White, she's the earlier literacy coaching consultant. She emailed myself, as well as a couple other administrative staff. A nice email recognizing our staff. Her daughters get upset when they can't go to childcare because of the snow day, or they can't go in because of not enough time. So, really appreciate the recognition that parents are...
This is evidence enough to not have any more snow days in the rest of the year. Oh, Crystal, thank you.
I will. Appreciate it. And as a thank you for all your support, our preschool students made you guys all a little thank you card. We hope that you guys enjoy them and hang them up in your office. And that's it. Thank you. If you're welcome.
So, I would just like to say for the board's perspective, before you ask any questions, is kudos to Steph, who, quite frankly, we have been working really hard to connect professional development that happens, especially for our kindergarten and lower elementary staff with our preschool program. A majority of these students become LCS students. And we have had some problems in the past with employees for readiness. So, one, two, you know, obviously, it starts at the top and our leadership has been really open to that. Staff has been fantastic in incorporating some of those standards into their classrooms. The assessments are really bearing fruit and strong indicators that our kids are coming in more prepared, that are participating in this program. And it's also, just to be quite honest, this outreach to our youngest families, youngest parents, right, youngest students, is really important for future growth of the district as their first experience with a peer is not just about, you know, healthy play and great relationship building with the staff, but it's also about academic growth, readiness, preparedness. And if there's a serious component of that, that their staff has really owned and has done great things for us. So, thank you very much for what you guys have done.
Any other comments or questions?
Just want to say thanks. I really appreciate you coming in and presenting to at least me information. I really appreciate that. And I think the real trick is especially with the years that you are taking them to learn and progress and not to let them know that they're learning and progressing. Because they're still ahead of time. Yeah, what a better way to do it. I do really want to suggest to you though that you pick up the pace because you said in one class it was only rated 150 out of 156. There's some room for improvement.
Don't come back. Well, that's better.
Love to hear, love to hear all of the connections that are being made and the thought that is behind it and what's into it. Yeah, I really appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. I really, I learned a lot of new things that I did not know myself. And what you're doing to these young minds is amazing. Thanks. Let me show that office apart from that. Okay, we'll move on to our discussion items, is our board candidate interviews. So, we want to thank you so much for your interest in the Lopier Community School Board of Education. On behalf of our members in the district, we're excited to hear your presentations this evening. Mrs. Moss has each of your names typed up on a slip of paper. And she will randomly select the order in which you will present this evening. Remember you have seven minutes to address the questions, the four questions we've been asking you ahead of time. Mrs. Moss will give you a warning at one minute, 30 seconds, and a notice when your time is expired. The board reserves the right to ask clarifying questions only, but cannot ask any additional questions. We have your submitted materials and the responses you provided this evening on which to base our decision. As you know, the board will conduct a special meeting on Wednesday, February 12th at 7:00 PM. At this time, we will deliberate about the candidates and make our formal selection. We will administer the oath of office and have you assume your board seat that evening. So, thank you again for your interest. And Mary, would you please select the first candidate?
I had military personnel vet Kurt Watson.
First of all, Madam President and board members, thank you for letting me be here this evening. To address the, kind of the first two questions, because they go hand in hand. What are some of the challenges facing schools today? And what ideas, contributions do I have? And then also directly with Lopier Community Schools. Thinking about it, looking at it, of course, I think one of the biggest issues is, of course, financial. We always fall back to it. The problem is that schools are not being funded as needed to run a business of this size. And that's what schools are, is they're a business, right? So, the biggest problem we have with the business is we can't sell our product because they're the kids. So, we can't increase profit margins on them. So, that leaves the people in the process to finish, right? The people, we have some incredible people in the peer community school system, incredible people. We just need to be sure they're utilized correctly and efficiently. The process, that entails not only correct staffing, but facilities and programs that work to create the best product, which is educated and future ready young adults. The solution? Not sure. I don't have a big checkbook. But on a state level, yeah. We need them to give us the money they promised without stealing it from another spot. Because they like to do that and say, hey, we're going to give you this and we're going to take that. So, we need them to give instead of give and take. Robin Peter and PayPal doesn't work. So, the other one is, as a school board, we need to monitor legislation and be a voice when we have a chance to effect some changes at the legislative level. My wild thought is lottery. I know we're supposed to get money from there, but still, if there's a $1.6 billion lottery and someone's going to win it, does someone really need $900 million to win by themselves? There's got to be a way to scrape some more money off the top there. But I won't be able to say that. Locally, for us here at LCS, fiscal responsibility. So, that's having a strategic plan and budgets and attempting to follow that at all costs. Sometimes it doesn't happen because things come up, changes need to be made, and that's why the board's here to make those decisions. The other thing that we can do is search for additional funding, grants, partnering with other schools, colleges, businesses, leader fund, any other sources of income that come into this school that we get to keep that someone's not taking is a great way. Another major issue I see is teachers. Teachers, not individually, but as a profession, unfortunately, the numbers are declining there as well. So, by 60, 70% of kids going into college, there's that many less teachers that are applying for that. Why? Defining it not a viable option to make a living. So, that's no good. So, that needs to be fixed or attempted to be fixed. And then, the problem with that is if the numbers are low, are we really getting the best of the best out of it? So, we need that to become what it used to be, where people wanted to teach, they could teach, and they could support families with it as well. The solution with that, of course, money, again. But money's not always the answer to fix things with employees. And I know that from running a business. Money works for a short time. It's money and it's looking at what other things between pay and actual benefits of their position actually work for them. So, yeah, sometimes it's a little money, but sometimes it's more other things that in challenges they're having that we can help fix. So, that's what makes employees happy. So, we need to look at all the factors and then make educated, responsible decisions for our people here to make the process work to create an amazing product. And of course, the defining numbers. We know it, we've seen it, we hear it, it's there. So, how do we solve that? Keep the ones we have, following implemented strategies and budgets. Attract others by those school improvements, whether it's facilities, programs, et cetera. And then, we need to realize that the school of choice, I don't know if it's good or bad. Because we got kids who want to go to another school because they've got this and that and the next thing, and we don't. But the parent that lives here doesn't want to vote for our bond. So, how do we solve that? And then, we have kids who come to our school because we have something they don't. But we're not getting their tax dollars. So, we're fixing them for free. So, I don't know how those are fixed. We keep working on it. The roles and responsibilities of board members. I guess mine is first aid, be present. And I don't just be attending the meetings. It's being active, being an active participant, engaging in discussions, concerns, searching for resolutions. Someone that acts as a teammate to achieve the goals that propel the district excellence. Be an upstanding steward of LCS, your accountability and participation. And of course, the board members, we need to always be aware of those three Ps. The people, which is ourselves, the superintendent, faculty, staff. The process, following all the guidelines, the strategic plans, the budgets that make it work. And then, of course, the product. Creating some incredible young adults that will be ready to tackle the world in any direction they choose. And of course, number four, what would we like to see changed or what would I like to see changed or expanded in the district? And how do I envision my role in that? One, I'd like to see the address of the high school changed. That's number one. So, I guess my role in that, help figure out bond version 2.0. Don't know what it is, don't know how to change it, but that's what happens with discussions and that's why you become part of the board. If Ann Arbor can get a $1 billion bond passed for 18,000 students, why can't we pass it for 5,200? It's ridiculous.
One minute.
Thank you. Another one I would like to see, kind of off the cuff, but I'd love to see a life skills class. The learning basic skills, tools, basic tools, vehicles, why won't my car start? Like, not fixing the engine, but basic stuff that kids are going to go to college and they go, mom, dad, they don't know. They don't know how to turn a screwdriver, fix a this, fix a that. Yeah, you can Google it, but it's not the same. But finances, etiquette, problem solving, common sense stuff. I think this helps drive kids towards careers that might fit for them. Be a college's, the trades, specialized programs, or the job force, if they're going to just go right into work after high school. But at least it helps. Even live with a roommate, someone's got to teach them. It's not the same as living at home, let me tell you. So, my role in that is definitely not teaching it. Possibly assisting in the initial set.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, Madam President, have a good evening.
Chair of the floor. Thank you for this opportunity to address all of you here and there. Okay, what are some of the challenges facing schools today and what ideas and contributions could I offer to the group? Challenge one, funding is challenging. Less funding means smaller staff, fewer resources, and lower number of services for students. Ideas to help solve the funding challenge. The states contribute, I hope this is accurate, 44% of education funding in the US. Implementing a progressive tax code taxing wealthy and corporations, their view, local and federal government taxes. That money could be used for public education systems. And seek out school improvement grants for school educational agencies that are used to make competitive subgrants for the capacity as a school educational agencies. Or subgrants, excuse me, to local educational agencies that demonstrate the greatest need for funds and the strongest commitment to use the funds to provide adequate resources to raise achievement of students in the lowest performing schools. The second challenge is school safety. Don't really know a lot about what's happening in our schools. I'd like to find out more. My children were out of school a long time ago. So, keeping children in the staff safe in the school building. Ideas to help solve the safety issue, and I'm sure you're doing these already. Blocking the doors at all times. Personally, when you can come into the school building, we need to receive permission to enter from a designated office personnel that would allow entry after communicating, viewing the visitor, and finding him or her eligible to enter. And police officer lies on patrolling the school hallways. Now, we have that happening. Higher security measures might be needful, such as metal detectors or other forms of prevention methods for detecting violence. And I, I know that would be very, very costly. I'm not really looking for that, but that's one way. Reinforcing the children to speak up to a teacher, principal, office personnel if they overhear suspicious conversations or see strangers, unusual objects in someone's locker or school bag. Challenge three, student attitudes and behaviors, disrespect for teachers and peers, tardiness, and absenteeism. Ideas to help solve those stupid bad attitudes and behaviors. Have a reward system for attendance and getting to class routinely on time. Learning points for extra credit are another way to recognize good student performance. There are reasons why students act out. And having them talk with a caring guidance counselor without fear of breaching confidentiality unless the student's house is at risk. Or referring the child to another public community organization equipped to meet the needs of a student and their family. Waiting in the child just needs redirection. Give an opportunity to be useful, keep them occupied with helpful things. Those are the challenges I have been presenting. What are the roles and responsibilities of school board members? Hire and evaluate district supervisor, adapt and oversee the annual budget. Approving the school calendar, adapting curriculum, overseeing construction, and approving contracts outside vendors. These were generic things I found online. I'm not sure if the peer community school follows this all the way. Set policies that gives the district direction to set policies and achieve its goals. Manage the collective bargaining process for employees. The board collaborates and works as a team. Balance discussion of running the district while paying close attention to the district's priorities for academic achievement. Cultivate trust and transparency by sharing information with the community. What I would like to see changed or expanded in the district? The homeschool partnership is a wonderful collaboration that benefits both the public school and the homeschool students and their families. Operating forces at the school building and participating in athletics and other traditional experiences is a win-win for everybody. Learning more about this program will help me determine the way I might contribute to expanding into areas yet uncharted for the students. The 13-year school program is a wonderful opportunity for students to earn an associate's degree about any additional classes to their... degree about any additional cost to their family. I'd like to see more students involved in this program to keep college spots down. Make sure all the students are aware of this opportunity in middle school or in the first year of high school. What are some of the challenges facing LaPierre Community Schools and how I would address them? Elementary school buildings with empty classrooms because of declining enrollment. One minute. Student use of cell phones and texting in classrooms. Governor would not approve a budget on time. That makes it difficult for schools to have a plan of action for the school year when they don't know the amount of state funding that they're gonna provide. Ideas to stop students use of cell phone during class hours. And I don't know what's happening now, but parents and students informed of no cellphone use. Well, I just wanted to say, um, thank you for letting me have this opportunity. I look forward to working with the school board members and to make the best district that we can have for our children. I seek every school board member's vote for me to help make this stand in the board. I look at this board member that we sign together with the Lords, help we can overcome the problems facing our school district. Thank you. That's fine. Thank you.
What's happening?
Oh, I was talking. Next candidate? Next candidate is Maurice Creed.
Carol, sorry. I'm really sorry. We're like, there are those, we're like, we're really sorry about those disruptions.
That was supposed to happen during Maurice's part.
Man, like you say.
Hey, Carol, you did a great job calling right through.
Well done.
Number one of the board, staff and the audience. Thank you for this opportunity. Um, I'm a known entity in the community, maybe fortunately, again, fortunately, but I'm active, I'm available. Um, I'm here to address some concerns and I'm gonna take your, uh, concerns a little bit out of order. So I'm gonna start with number three, role of the school board. And I'm gonna start with constitutional, uh, reference. Article eight, section one of Michigan Constitution, 1963, provides, "Religion, morality, and knowledge being necessary to good government and happiness of mankind. Uh, schools are the means of education shall forever be encouraged." All right? So that's the basic function of, of education. In other words, the school board must provide an opportunity for children to assess good and good quality education in order to come to the citizens. All right? Therefore, the board provides a direction and policy to adopt to say, oh, and you have a good staff. Um, from what I understand, and you do, and you guys know me, I've been actively reviewing the schools. Schools are going pretty good, especially the elementary schools. They're award-winning schools, so that's, that's a good thing. Now I'm gonna go with the number one, challenges facing schools today. This is generally for all schools. Uh, compliance with no trial law behind legislation back 20 years ago. What has that done? The burden on the school teacher in the classroom is enormous. What has happened is that the, the truck teachers become the complete caregivers to the, to children. We need more involvement of parents. Definitely need to encourage parent participation and, and involvement in order to further good quality education. Number two, the declining student population. Matt, uh, excuse me, Superintendent Wondry and his staff and I have discussed this issue extensively. Now, we know that LaPierre, uh, is really under, in my opinion, is going through a growth, everybody in the country is going through a little bit of a growth development. But the declining population is indicated according to demographics. Why are we doing that? Well, we have the demographics of the community and we have to figure out exactly what this community needs. Uh, so that's neat. Now, remember, there's only seven in the school. It's like asking me to do a file. Matt and I spent four hours just discussing myriad of issues on all this. I hit the number three, my, my, uh, next issue. We have maintenance operations in several schools in the latter district, brick and mortar issues. And that's an operational maintenance, uh, that we have to investigate for all schools. For security of student and teacher population, we're all afraid of the situations with, uh, malice and, and problems with the schools. And we talked about Mayfield Elementary. Mayfield, to me, is not a safe institution. Can't be safe because of the way it's constructed. So there are concerns for that one. What's another issue in the school business? Vaping and opioid addiction. That's an issue that needs to be addressed. All right, what's the challenges to the LaPierre Community School business? This is a concern of mine. I saw a paper two weeks ago. My friend over here, this published in the paper, that he is being vetted for Downla-Zoo. I understand that failed, but he is a, a vital commodity for people wanting. So that's an issue that LaPierre Community Schools is going to address. We're gonna address it with him, and if he makes a decision to go elsewhere, then the board has to decide to replace him. Number two, uh, a referendum on the school millage. This is an issue that was, I brought to this attention of this board before. I believe it is a referendum on this board. I think it was ill-conceived, the millage, that was done last. Doesn't mean that a millage properly brought to the board would, and directed to the staff would pass. I thought the one that was suggested was a little bit disordered, and, uh, it, it works out on, on the vote, votes do matter, elections matter. So that's an issue that you, that was a concern. All right, and the other issue, restore trust, uh, to members of LaPierre Community School District because of that one. There are some people, and I talk to them all the time, and you know that I have worked in organizations that address these concerns. There is some distrust with regard to this board that has to be addressed. You have to understand the trust with the community. Number, uh, that, now, um, operation and maintenance of Mayfield Elementary, I addressed that, it's a security issue. There are some other problems that have come up with Mayfield. Mayfield has a heating and cooling issue, and that's, it's tighter. Uh, the CFI campus, the west campus, that needs to be addressed. We discussed that at length regarding electrical, wiring, the ADH standards, and steps and so forth, that needs to be addressed. Uh, bus transportation. Bussing your children nine, 10 miles around the circuit, and every time I go out and do something about 3:30, 4 o'clock, I see a bus coming down Valentine Road. It's 4 o'clock in the evening. They, they are picked up between 6:00 and 6:30 in the morning. That's a long day. That needs to be addressed, bus transportation. Uh, the performing arts center is a concern. I, I've talked to a lot of teachers, 60% of the desire of the millage was to establish performing arts. Okay, uh, okay. That's performing arts classroom accommodation with technology, reviewing electrical service to provide utility devices. Demand for substitute, uh, teachers is another issue. Classroom size is another issue. Governor's mandatory passing of children with knee testing, that's an issue. Suggestions, maintain better control of education and curriculum, we're doing that. Improve security and safety with more officers and various institutions. Uh, encourage alternate methods of learning and co-ops, vocational training, return physical education, nutrition and exercise is a mandatory part of the curriculum. Integrate the reading comprehension initiatives at Schindler and, uh, and your award winning school, Murphy. Uh, recruit substitute teachers from retirees and veterans. I'd ask for legislation to be passed in the office to give special dispensation to your veterans to fill you necessarily in part for, for, uh, substitute duty. Thank you for your time and I, I appreciate any consideration, I'll, I'll request.
Uh, Mr. Creed mentioned that he spent four hours together. I want to note that that was the best four hours of his life.
Well, man, at this time, I'm not gonna discuss.
April LeBar.
Tell me when you're ready to go, okay? Whenever you're ready. Hello, board members, Superintendent Wondry. My name is April LeBar. Some of the challenges facing schools today and what ideas and contributions can I offer to address them? Some of the challenges facing schools today are low enrollment, having older buildings, and starting to find funding to pay for upkeep and maintenance, lack of parent involvement, and community understanding of the difficulties facing today's schools. LaPierre is no different. We also have an uninformed, misinformed tax basis, not wanting to commit to their community by way of voting down bond proposals, and an online social media community who love to give criticism, but are unwilling to engage in the endless opportunities afforded them by the current administration to share ideas and find solutions in a structured setting. What can I do to help change that mentality? I can offer my passion for helping and by offering up suggestions that resolve with voters to improve the landscape here in LaPierre. The last bond initiative failed and we need to listen to the voters as to the why it failed. We need to present a plan that factors in more reasonable spending and appeal to the desires of wanting tentative blueprints or plans of any proposed design changes. We need to right-size our district and move forward for our kids' sake. We cannot erase policy of previous administrations and we cannot remove the distrust that runs rampant of our current administration, but we can pledge to do better with passion and resolve in order to unite our community that we love. The east-west mentality needs to stop while still being respected as part of our history and heritage, but we need to forge forward to provide our children with the best opportunities and resources that we can afford for the future and the goal of a true one LaPierre. In order to move into the future, we need to continue to hire and promote strong administrators such as Matt Wondry, Jeff Stanton, Wyatt Stevens, Katie Jordan, and Robert Downey that focus on discipline and upholding the code of conduct for students. We need to maintain the leadership in our buildings by entrusting them as principals, by believing in them and their vision, and it will help stabilize our schools. The public will respect LCS and will have confidence in our decisions if we continue to promote and recognize our leaders within. What are the roles and responsibilities of board members? The roles and responsibilities of a school board member are to set a vision and goals for the district they represent, serve as a leader and representative of our community, and as advocates on behalf of students and our district. Adopt policies that give the district direction to set priorities and achieve its goals. Adopt and oversee a balanced budget to the community and collaborate with other board members as a team to ensure follow-through. What would I like to see changed or expanded? One of the many that I would like to see changed is to eliminate a majority of the transfer buses. The only way to do that is to, again, right-size our district and to allow all ninth through 12th graders under one roof and have a two-tiered bussing system as was proposed last November. As a parent of three students in LCS, I appreciate that we are known as the district of choices and that by being able to offer these choices, it often comes with a price to pay, often by the student by way of time. On average, my seventh and ninth grader students are on a bus five different times a day, taking a bus and getting dropped at the high school to take a bus to Zimmer, to take a bus at the high, to take the class at high school, being shuffled back to Zimmer, taking the transfer bus to Roland-Worner, a class at CFI, taking the transfer bus back to Roland-Worner, and the loss of valuable instruction time is about 20 to 25 minutes per day for my ninth grader and 10 to 15 minutes for my seventh grader. That adds up to a minimum of one to two hours a week, and by choosing to participate, it often means that my ninth grader misses out on iConnect. iConnect has been promoting the wonderful Positivity Project that teaches character traits and qualities and embody a well-rounded person, that helps build stronger relationships, and the summation is other people mattering. If the Positivity Project is important enough to be part of the curriculum, then there are kids missing out on it due to bussing or doing them a disservice. About 50 hours minimum per student per year, on my estimate, are being lost of valuable instruction time due to transfer buses, and we must find a solution. Also, with increased time spent on transfer buses with no supervision other than the bus driver, it creates more of a challenge to monitor behavior. I envision my role in changing that policy is to help bring awareness to the public of the challenges our administration and transportation department is faced with every day, with the undertaking of granting these opportunities to each student. As a parent volunteer, I am aware of the sacrifices made by so many of our dedicated staff to ensure the safety and well-being of our students. If the public just knew how much thought and planning went into each of these opportunities that we strive to offer our children, perhaps they'd be willing to pass the bond initiative and support our schools and community to eliminate some of the struggles that we face. As a resident of LaPierre since 2012, I am proud to be a member of the community and I am proud to have my three children enrolled at LCS. The opportunities available to them and the way that the district has overcome every obstacle thus far makes me want to do more. I just know that despite all of the wonderful things I have witnessed and taken heart in, that there is more out there. We can do better. We can work collectively to provide LaPierre as not just a district of choice, but as a district of excellence that every resident can respect and be proud of. I want to help LaPierre achieve excellence. One of the quotes or mantras that I live by is do a job bigger small, do above or not at all. Everything I do, I do to the best of my ability. My mission is to serve, and I want to serve my community by being part of the LCS Board of Education. I may not have all of the answers, but I know that with the right group of people, we can seek to find those answers that will put the kids' best interests first, because that is why we are here, for the kids, for all 5,200 of them. Thank you, board members, for your consideration, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Claire, I'm sorry, any questions?
Thank you.
And then, right, the last one, what do you think about that?
I want to thank the board for the opportunity to address you today and the opportunity to, uh, possibly take on the school. I thank the board president and superintendent and the rest of the board. Just four questions to address. First one being the worst of the challenges facing schools today. Class sizes. I had that issue in this district at the elementary level. Class sizes in many schools throughout the country are large. These can be solved in many ways, thinking out of the box, plus maybe some traditional ways. Right sizing school districts, repurposing underutilized rooms, reopening closed schools that may exist in the district, bond proposals. Uh, when I was in high school, I was a student tech in the district I lived in. One of the ideas that some of the elementary schools had is to have additional classroom space rather than building new buildings or taking on expansive remodels, is they took some of their computer labs that were in their main buildings and put them out in mobile, mobile, uh, tractors. Very nice looking, nothing trashy looking, and they were connected to the school, but they're inexpensive. So you've got fiscal responsibility component, and you also provide additional inexpensive space to cook computer labs, things that aren't used necessarily full-time in the school all day, and frame up regular classrooms for full-time instruction. Technology is another issue. Computers are expensive, they get obsolete, they need to be replaced. This can be solved with, again, bond proposals, partnering with private businesses to, uh, either fund or provide grant programs. Companies like Dell, HP, Google, I hear all the time that they're involved in education programs, some to reach out to. Another issue, lack of parent involvement. Parents are busier than ever. It's requiring sometimes both parents in the house to both work, sometimes take on multiple jobs, and managing that and one with their, their child's school life can be difficult. One way to improve that through small, small ways that don't take a lot of time is send home. One way to improve that through small ways that don't take a lot of time is send home little assignments that don't take a lot of time, something that's required for a parent to sit with their child and do, real quick activity, sign off on it, return it to the teacher. That way, the parent kind of gets an idea of what's going on in class and gets the parent a little bit more involved without any major time involved. Some of the issues that are facing Locuris School District are also on the national level. Class sizes here, as I mentioned before. Elementary classes are combined. I would like to see the district rethink their plan in relation to the failed bond. I think that this community wants to support the schools, they want to improve the schools, but it's a more rural area, a more fiscally conservative, middle-income, average area. This isn't Ann Arbor, it's not Bloomfield. People aren't as affluent here, not saying anything wrong, but I recently was involved in a project at my company to redevelop one of our products and improve it, require our application development team to be involved, and they use what's called an agile management method. It's where you take a big project such as this bond, you've got a lot of stuff involved in it, and you break it down into smaller, easier-to-manage chunks. I think by looking over all the stuff that was in the bond, deciding what needs to be first, and second, third, and passing smaller little bonds that maybe expire in five years, and then passing another one that might make the community here a little more palatable to the idea, and it might take a longer term to get the whole goal accomplished, but the community would be probably a little more receptive to taking on those financial responsibilities that were broken down. Also, we have a very sparse geographical footprint. I think maybe some of the outlying areas look into spinning them off into districts that are closer to those areas and coming up with a core that's easier to manage, easier to bus. So it's just a few of the ideas to help possibly alleviate some of the issues that this district has. As far as roles and responsibilities of a school board, they carry out the state's educational obligations at the local level, take over office, uphold laws, are responsible for educating students in the community, hiring teachers, administrators, negotiating contracts. That's just some of the, a lot of the hard work that school boards go through. Something I'd like to see expanded before actually started, if it hasn't, I don't have all the answers, but somebody mentioned an adult class teaching life skills. It's a very good idea. Depending on budgeting, an entire class may not be feasible, but maybe a day or two out of the year where you bring in community people or other teachers who teach household tasks, changing tires, balancing checkbooks, just these little things that are important in life. So it's just something I'd like to see.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you everyone for coming this evening, we appreciate it. It was your time this evening to spend to share with us the answers to your questions, give us some things to think about, and deliver it on next Wednesday, November 12. Okay, well, to move on to the next item of our agenda is the report. So, Mr. Higdon, can you take us through the Student Equity and Communications Committee?
Thank you, Madam President. Certainly, I agree to see the Communications Committee, that on January 20th, 2020, the committee meeting, our members were Denise, myself, and Mrs. Novak. The meeting was called to order at 4:40 PM. We talked about the athletic policy update, the inter-schoolastic policy 2431, which is the interschoolastic athletics. We reviewed the changes needed to make, to be made to policy 2431 in order to align within our current practice that comply with the MHSA guidelines. We, the three of us in the room, all agreed to these changes for the first reading tonight. We also looked at policy 2431.01, the academic standards for participation in non-credit These changes were recommended to align within our district policy with the MHSA policy regarding prior year academic record for students entering their freshman year at high school. The MHSA does not consider grade from middle school in determining initial eligibility for high school sports. We are aligning with that policy. However, we will continue to exceed the MHSA eligibility standards by monitoring academic progress with consequences at the start of the school year. Again, we all agreed to support this guideline change. In spading middle school co-op, Chad Spolsky was there and discussed the possibility of expanding it in athletic cooperative agreement with other local schools. Further discussion will take place before any decisions are made or even brought to the board. Athletic Conference, Principal Spolsky also shared that he has been invited to attend a meeting to learn about ideas being discussed by area schools regarding the formation of athletic conference. Mr. Spolsky shared with the committee some of the benefits and challenges of our current athletic conference and discussed the ideas that were shared by the schools in attendance at the meeting. In the upcoming weeks, a plan will be developed to solicit feedback from the community, coaches, athletes, parents regarding the benefits and challenges of our current conference compared to whatever could be moving forward in the future. And then, just a strategic plan update, Superintendent Wondry reviewed the strategic plan with the committee, discussed, discussions included board meetings, topics, committee meeting topics, leadership activities, bargaining, strategic planning for the 212021 school year, and the admitting adjournment at 5:57, if you might say, beside.
Thank you, Mr. Higdon. Any questions?
Just as a side note, Madam President, the athletic conference discussion is really in its infancy. My nine years as superintendent, I have been approached 10 to 15 different times about athletic conference realignment, a variety of these processes, or there's always turnover and evolution of athletic conferences as districts consolidate, schools close, conference alignment begins to shift as a result of it. I would say that if there's 100 steps in a community moving from one athletic conference to another, we are at step one, maybe step point five in that process. I was invited, one of our staff members, Professor Spolsky, as our athletic director, was invited to attend a meeting at Oxford High School a few weeks back. They're beginning the process of perhaps talking to some communities about potential new conference. I have yet to have one conversation with another superintendent or school board member. This is a decision that is ultimately made by a board and district leadership team, requires significant input from student athletes, parents, booster club members, coaches, and certainly this Board of Education. So Chad and I are in the exploratory phase only, I would say. So if you've heard rumors out there that we're moving conferences, it's changing next year, none of that's true, but we have always maintained, even when we became a member of the Second Amendment Conference, Metro, when we combined the high schools, that we were always open to discussion and consideration of new athletic conference alignment. We've had a number of discussions the past several years since we moved on to high school, none of it's come to fruition. I have, I don't know where these discussions will lead, but it was a rumor in the community. We did make it a committee item for discussion, and I wanted to share with the board that we've got a long way to go if this is to happen, so, but the discussions are happening. Everybody here is an expert on where we're at with the conference alignment, so tell 47 friends, and that should cover our bases.
Perfect, thanks. Okay, Mrs. Novak, will you take us with the Finance and Operations Committee, Ms. Clark?
Yes, good you. We met on January 27th, the meeting was called to order at 4:00, 4:01 PM. It consisted, committee members were myself, Denise Becker, and Brad Higdon. We talked first about the sale of district property in Maple Grove. Currently, Community Mental Health, CMH, leases this building from us, from Locuris Community Schools, with our lease expiring in June of this year. They are interested in purchasing the building and currently working with our board on these details. Mr. Wondry explained that we are waiting for appraisal numbers to come back on the sale of the building, since previous data shows that the district enrollment is still declining. He is recommending market, marketing the building for sale regardless if CMH purchases it or not. Updates will be provided to the committee as they become available. Locata property expansion, we talked about that next, Mark Rader discussed the possible sale of district property to Locata, which is Locuris Area Citizens Against Domestic Nonleaks. They are looking to purchase a possible five acres from the district with a cost of approximately $7,000 per acre. Mark will update the committee here as more information becomes available. And lastly, we reviewed the strategic plan as well. Mr. Wondry reviewed the strategic plan. He explained to the committee that we will be asking for board action on elementary school closure at the March board meeting rather than the April meeting, as previously stated. The strategic plan will be discussed further at our February 12 special meeting. We adjourned at 4:45 PM.
Thank you, Mrs. Novak. Any questions, attendents? Thank you. Moving into presentations for this evening, Mrs. Seifley, will you take us through the superintendent evaluation process?
So before Mrs. Seifley dives into everybody's favorite topic, we are going to expedite this process because this is experience for this, for this process. I'm going to share with you my formal update following Kim's free-form review of the evaluation process in accordance with Michigan State law, but for the purposes of those in attendance, Kim will explain what all this means, and the board has the opportunity to individually evaluate me on their own time, becoming theirs in a formal group, and do that as per part of this process. So I don't want anybody to think we're trying to fly through it, but we've all sat through this presentation a number of times, and we can't wait to hear it again.
We're in really love with this.
And Kim can't wait to hear it.
Again, as Matt said, in March is when this process really, at the March board meeting, will really take place, and so tonight, remind, we do it once a year, so it's not new, but it's a good refresher as there's a variety of things that are going to be happening over the next month, so. I don't have it there.
I'll look for you.
The superintendent, just as other instructional staff, the evaluation process is mandated, and those regulations, thank you very much. This is not new stuff, but very much the same rules and regulations that apply to building administrators and teachers, requirements for student growth, process that's approved by the state, all of those components apply to the superintendent as well. Our process is 100% compliant with all of those things, and we're going to fly through it pretty quick here.
Hi, Mom.
One of the first things to, in order to be compliant, all of our materials regarding, actually, all of those three different tools are available online. So every, the tool, the superintendent is evaluated with, all of those details you can get from the transparency page, makes it nicely, if anybody's curious, as to more than what I'm going to share. This board selected, and we've now been using the NASB Superintendent Evaluation System, I think this is about the third year or so of training was provided in 2017. We are required, when new board members come aboard, they will be required to complete that training, so keep that, whoever that might be, there's some training down the road you'll have to do. And with that training, there is an evaluation cycle that is established. We use the evaluation cycle, really, the evaluation kicks off in April and concludes in March. That really aligns with the annual renewal of contracts and those types of things, so it works real well for us. The timeline looks like this, April is when it started, there are informal and formal updates that take place throughout the year. Matt, superintendent, provides evidence along the way, and in February, tonight, we review the process. Over the next month, there is a series of information that will be provided to board members, including superintendent self-evaluation, some data, and end-of-the-year data pieces, and also progress towards district goals. That information is reviewed prior to the March board meeting where we will go into closed session and complete the evaluation and then come out into open session and report those results. The actual process itself, these components are really mandated, 40% student growth, that is true for the superintendent, and again, all of those instructional staff, there's data that we must analyze. The remainder of the evaluation is professional practice ratings and progress towards district goals. Kind of breaking that down a little bit further, the, within the professional practice rating, there are five different domain areas, governance and board relations, each one of these has its own specified percentage, community relations, staff relations, business and finance, and instructional leadership. On the student growth side, student growth is 40%, and if you want to click the next one, there's a host of things that go into the student growth, again, not just for the superintendent, but teachers and building administrators as well. And the next slide will show you what all of those peo-, oh, oh, one more. Thank you. The state assessment and other growth measures, something that's interesting about the growth component is it's not just one test. There are, there's state assessments which takes a look at M-Step results, PSAT results. On the other side, by level, we have identified various other growth assessments, so all of those pieces factor in in establishing a final growth calculation. The tests and assessments that are used to determine the growth score from superintendent are the exact same tests and assessments that are used to do scores for individual teachers for building administrators. We just extrapolate, extrapolate that data at a higher level, but it's the exact same assessments. So those pieces come in and apply both components to determine that final rating. Again, just kind of the, those different components, on the professional practice rating, I showed you those different areas, each one of these is broken down, I'm not going to take you into all those components, but if you click the next slide, the professional practice rating categories are those five that we spoke of, and each one of those is broken down further into subcategories. I think there's an example here under, yeah, one more, there you go. In the business and finance category, for example, these are all of the different strands that there will be a score determined on. When the board deliberates, and if you look at the tool online, there's actually quite a bit of detail as to how you rate financial controls, and so those, that level of detail is what we provide a little bit. We go into closed session and take a look at that, each, all, I think there's a total of 30 or 35, go through, painstakingly review the data, make a determination, and ultimately that is.
It's painstaking to you, Kim. Yeah.
It's long, it's long, it's, it's tough. Once those things are reviewed in closed session, determined in closed session, and then actually each one of these will tell you, we come back out in open session once those final scores are made and those are reviewed publicly. This is just, those are the, those are the details, there's that level of detail for each one. The rubrics that are provided through NASB actually give us some, some idea of what does ineffective, minimally effective, effective, and highly effective look like, so there's a very kind of prescript- a very kind of prescriptive method that we use to determine those things. And the final piece is that vote is taken, and the summative evaluation for the superintendent will be adopted once we come, after turn into open session. I think that's the last one, all at March meeting. So, for board members, you will start to, we'll start sending out reminders of how to get access to that stuff, there will be loads of information coming your way over the next few weeks, and as always, any questions? All right?
Okay, so segue that into my formal update, this PowerPoint presentation adds the rest of my submissions of evidence, will be provided on the SharePoint file that you all have access to, but this is required of our process. Kim already discussed the different domains that I am evaluated according to. So, the board, by February seventeenth, two thousand twenty, which is exactly two weeks' worth of time to evaluate these materials, prior to the March meeting, you will receive an updated direction to access SharePoint, a scored self-evaluation that I complete every year, a blank evaluation form, and then a copy of my contract, because my evaluation and then the contract is reviewed annually, as you know, so the board has a full two weeks to review all those documents. In closed session, we do a scoring document together, it's not an average, so everyone is aware of that, we sit down and deliberate into those domains, as Kim said, and what I've done is have here a sample of the SharePoint data, and what it actually looks like, so this is the dashboard, if you will. Each of those domain areas that we refer to has its own folder. Throughout the course of the year, I upload evidence in here that would be supportive of a particular rating, so, it's the, we've governance and board relations, you click on that domain, and there's been a number of documents that I've put in here so the board can review those, you know, board meeting packets, emails that we've had, things of that nature, so you go in and have, the next least review that, that information. We go into staff relations, business, finance, instructional leadership, so, let's say, example, progress towards district goals, you see our L C S goals are in here, let's click on that, it's our most updated goal document with all of our metrics included, and that's loading right now, but there you go. So, you have a copy of all these documents, so you're not just fishing around, all this is updated, and then when I give myself a self-rating, you can actually check it against the evidence that I've submitted, so it's a pretty scientific process, and it gives you the opportunity, and the board is not limited to evaluating me just on the evidence that I submit, but also on your own opinion in these various domain areas, as you all know, so, we have the domain areas, and then all the presentations that I've given throughout the year are included as well, so you see formal updates, informal updates, the actual evaluation process itself, all of that's uploaded here. When I get back from the office this evening, I'll upload this presentation for your review. So, basically, that's the quick overview, it's the board's responsibility to review this information on their own, and come to the meeting prepared to discuss the evaluation, we don't do it at this meeting. So, minimize that, go back to the presentation, and it should be one of those slides here. So, the timeline, as you all know, it will begin again in April, so we'll finish in March. The board issues a final effectiveness rating for the superintendent, discusses my contract, and then we begin the process again in April of two thousand twenty, for the cycle to end again in the following March, so, look for all that information coming from me in the next week or two for your review.
Great.
That's all I have to ask, President.
Any questions? Well, we look forward to your second session.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, Mr. Rader, will you come to share with us enrollment update and budget development process?
Now I can do my two hours of economic updates, so, get comfortable, couldn't belong you. We are starting the budget process, so don't forget your Pinterest app for me.
Excellent point.
Kind of mind.
That has a little sidebar, the lengthy presentation is a viable factor to be evaluated by the board.
We've got nine minutes. So, again, much like what we just saw from Kim and Matt, a lot of the budget process we've gone over many times begins in the spring here, actually, January with the revenue conference, and runs all the way through our board meeting issue. A number of different highlights happened, first the revenue conference in January, then the governor's budget, then the senate's budget, then the house's budget, then we wait for the conference committee and figure out. And in the meantime, we're going down the parallel tracks internally here, trying to figure out what that all means, so we can adjust our budget, and then have the budget managers meeting. This year, we're scheduling two of them, March sixteenth, May twentieth, some years we have three. Why two, you ask? Well, there are indices that say this should be at least a little coma water here than we've had historically for the last five years. So, we think we only need two to go through that with the budget managers from all the units, to go through our budget projections for the recommendation. We still have collective bargaining, we've got three of the four expiring contracts still in the process of negotiating, obviously, that impacts our budget forecasting, strategic plan that was already mentioned here previously, and then roll it all together and make that adoption and preparation for, for a balanced budget. Let's just talk about some things that went on. Matt was very intrigued by the West Texas crude bullet down here. Now, where do I come up with these? I literally go and listen to four hours of economists talk, the revenue conference in January, and extract a number of items. And actually, what I'm looking for, the indices, is to sales tax, and things that are going to affect the state's school aid fund, the general fund, because that's the only two things that really drive our finances to per, for, per pupil funding that we receive. So, forty-one consecutive quarters of recovery, why is that important? It's the longest and recorded modern history. We've not had an economic cycle this strong for this long. What's a teller want? It's going to come to an end at some point, folks. Now, what we hope is, it's a little bump, and not a deep one like we had back in six, seven, eight. Consumer sentiment is only holding, it's not growing, so even though we've had long recovery, we don't have folks buying a ton of consumer goods, lots of cars, cars are going down, high as seventeen point one million, then we go down to about sixty and a half million in two years for two thousand twenty-two. So, there are indicators that the economy's not as strong as everyone thinks it is. A third bulletin is the scariest. Manufacturing orders across the nation have been down five consecutive months in a row. That's what drives a lot of GDP in the nation, and so that's an indicator, the economy's been somewhat strong, but orders are down. Unemployment's low, but inflation's not growing because the feds have to play the monetary policy. So, you've got all these little things going on that we're watching, trying to figure out, what does it really mean to the state's budget? And the oil's on there, because for so many years, I think here now six years, six years ago, that was a big issue to us, if you remember, gas was about four dollars a gallon, we were paying about three twenty-five, three fifty for diesel fuel, and so, you watch that, because that's a huge part of our budget, that transportation budget. So, now we've got stability, because we're not as much dependent on global supply, we're actually producing it here domestically, and so there's less. Now, I say less until you get hurricane and golf, it disrupts the supply, and we see spikes, but it's not as vulnerable as the world economy with Middle East tensions, China and the Pacific, and the border, so that is helpful for the state's economy. Budget variables, biggest one on the left there, per pupil funding, eight thousand one hundred eleven dollars this fiscal year, that was a two hundred and forty dollar increase, that's the biggest increase we've seen in recent time. The good news is, you've seen a few slides, we're probably going to see similar dollars for the two thousand twenty-one year, believe it or not, but there's some cat costs to that. Right-hand side really doesn't change, because you've seen that the last couple of years, because those are major drivers to our budget, healthcare, salaries with the, but bargaining, mid-service, you'll see later, what a big concern that is, our fuel, our capital, as was talked earlier by a number of board candidates, of maintaining our facilities and our utilities. Pupils, so we use Stanford consultants, two times now in my six years, we've had Fred do projections, this is the latest after the fall, October count revised. The good news is, the stat is somewhat very accurate. Forty-nine, forty-one was Fred's most likely for the nineteen-twenty school year. Our October count was forty-nine, forty before audit, it's about forty-nine, thirty-six at P B right now. So, we do use these to rely on our budget and forecasting, our enrollment, along with birth rates and other things, but there's a variance there, because depending on what happens with the economy, local, in regional, and nationally, he may recommend most likely low, or take a blend. The last couple of years, Fred's been saying somewhere between the blend and the most likely, we fall, and we did fall here within that. Here's the actual numbers, far right-hand side, forty-nine, forty, as it was stated. So, you see the actual, last fiscal year, we had anomaly from our previous decreases, we went up, up twenty-nine students, this year, we went down forty. You see along the bottom, it's another indicator that we watch, the outgoing graduating class from previous, previous spring, so, June of two thousand nineteen, incoming kindergarten class, fall, October of nineteen, a difference of a hundred and fourteen students, that helps us predict what that middle number's going to be, that minus thirty-eight. Some of why we have seen softening and a lowering of that, our bullets here. The birth rate is stabilizing, you remember, we showed a real steep graph years ago of a decline. Actually, two thousand fifteen, the birth rates went down to be about forty percent, they were running around eight to eight twenty-five in the county of Pierre, they dropped down to about seven eighty, seven ninety. So, we should see a slight decrease come the fall, we'll see if those numbers hold. Our virtual, we've got a homeschool partnership, has added to soften that decline, as well as the transitioning of homeschoolers into full-time virtual classes. Other adverse impacts, college school's a choice, that's variable, we can control a little bit, but I believe one or two of the candidates talked about facilities that surround these school districts, we call competition of choice, and yes, we won't control what we control in Pierre, we can't control the surrounding ones, so that takes a variable, and then the economy. Wages, this is a big one. Why? Because minimum wage is going up. Literally could have two hours of charts and graphs for you. Well, the graphic they showed, this diagonal line going down on forty-five is the supply for employees in the workforce mission. Going up on forty-five is what our available workers, in five years, there's going to be over a hundred thousand F T E gap in Michigan for all jobs. We already see it here with our bus drivers, our custodians, our food service, as well as teachers for subbing, et cetera, so we're seeing that, but as minimum wage continues to go up, our competitive race, we're challenged to get workers to come in, competition right here in town. Benefits is always an issue for us, benefits are issue because they keep changing healthcare, so we had A C A some eight years ago, the actual catalog tax that was supposed to go in the pack this year, which would have cost us the millions as a district, because the programs we offer are richer than what that tax was, like about ninety-five percent of those employers in the United States was done away with, so that was a good thing. But we don't know, those change in, healthcare costs keep going up, so even though we've seen cost containment, we still see the cost, the premiums going up for us. Retirement, I've got a slide coming up, retirement will be a concern for the next twenty-plus Facilities we talked about, that has gone away, needs for brick and mortar, parking lots, driveways, buses, A check systems, boilers, buses in the middle, we are now fifty percent behind, we have only been able to afford our budget, floors and heat, buses to stay in a nine-year replacement schedule, so right now, we're twenty-four buses behind the normal. We're concerned what that is, and the state police, who do the annual inspections, change their rules, and they rent tag, we are not allowed to put those buses on the road. So, we now have some buses that are fifteen-plus years old, two hundred thousand miles plus, so that is always a concern. Technology's a constant struggle to keep up with, it's constantly changing, that's nothing new, and then the legislative process, it's just started, it's too early, any indications? If you listened to the governor's state and state speech, yes, she says we'll have a budget by July one, July one's way too late for us to figure out what they are going to do to do our budget, so we'll be making some estimated guesses. Good news, our fund balance, right now in the audit report, the board has seen this document before, during the fall time, and we've been able through these kinds of fiscal stewardship to slowly increase the percent of the fund balance in Pierre schools, and we're getting finally close to the goal of ten percent, that many years ago, when I started, seemed far off, but we are achieving, the work is towards that. The blank you see on the right-hand side, we won't know that until the fall when the audits are in for the fiscal twenty year, but if you just extrapolate it out, it's probably going to go into the mid-fifteens, so we keep lagging about six percentage points behind the state average of fund balances. Now, some real detail from the state. Sorry for being so small, I was trying to just get some information on the slide. So, state pupil, so the state pupil decrease continues, nine thousand students, what's that mean? It's roughly about eighty-one million dollars in school aid fund, so how have we kept the school aid fund balanced for the last ten years? There's a role in declining the state. So, this year, coming up, that's the state's fiscal year, two thousand twenty-one, seventy-three hundred students, so it's about sixty million. So, that twenty-one million is less they'll have to work with in the school aid fund, because the students are starting to soften and slow down. We watch at this, that's the only, that's one of the only things economically that's balanced the school aid fund for about the last five years, is it's been in the eleven and ten thousand, now it's starting to drop down seventy-three, sixty-six hundred in the next couple of years. Schooling fund revenues, schooling fund revenues are growing, because majority is six mil statewide tax, profit tax of those schooling fund, and then the majority is sales tax. So, you see modest growth, the problem is, the expenditures are growing too, you'll see in that slide here at the moment. So, even though that looks impressive, there's not a lot of extra money in the schooling fund that you would think that would be with that kind of growth. The auto sales already mentioned are declining, why? That always impacts the state of Michigan with sales, and jobs, and really tier-one, tier-two funding that goes along with that. Schooling balance sheet, this is a big one, doesn't sound like a House Bill forty-one, twenty-five, but if you go back two years ago, legislature passed a bill to change how much money goes from the schooling fund, from income tax into the schooling fund, to ship about sixty billion dollars into the general fund. Why does the general fund stay short? This bill undoes that. The problem is, it's passed the House, it sits in the Senate, and you'll see in a slide or so, that hundred and seventy-five million is huge for the schooling fund, because if it doesn't pass, the rich numbers will anchor the schooling fund for the next two years, will evaporate, and it'll just be marginal dollars. So, here it is, second line, revising to tax remark, forty-one, twenty-five, hundred and seventy-three million for fiscal nineteen twenty, hundred and seventy-nine, twenty twenty-one. So, bottom right-hand side, five hundred and thirty-six million, why is that important? Because if you look at revenues, or you're looking at that number, you divide by about one point four million students, you can kind of get an idea how much money's available for foundation increase. Current year, about three hundred across the board, but there's two x formulas, so it's really probably one hundred, two hundred. That's good news, but if that goes away, then you probably look at fifty, a hundred dollars. We need, we go down to seventy-five students, we need at least a hundred and twenty-five dollars increase in the foundation, and just to make the hole for the lost seventy-five students next year. We're now four- We're down forty this year. We've got always budget a little bit more conservative, so gives you an idea where the numbers fall, what we're looking for here. Also, you see general fund. General fund, forty-five million. These numbers changed three times within one day. Originally, that right-hand, lower-hand number was five hundred and sixty-eight million. Two hours later, they took twenty-five million out of that high revenue, sixty-two million in nineteen-twenty, they made it forty-five million. Because that's the minimum by constitution that you have to transfer to school aid fund. So there are already concerns, general funds going to short line. Then you look at the bottom, community colleges in higher ed, seven hundred and sixty million dollars. Shoot ahead for a second, we can always show you. Seven hundred and sixty-four million dollars is what goes from school aid fund into higher ed. That's a ton of money, and if you collectively add up the past ten years, we would have probably foundation allowance in the ten thousand range had we put that into the foundation allowance. Lot of information in there. Why I can't mention all these because these things are moving constantly, you don't want to look for any of these. Special aid costs are rising, about forty million dollars a year. Pupils are already centered declining, but what's also going on is the shift of traditional public. There's five hundred and sixty roughly in public schools, there's two hundred and eighty-five charter schools in the state of Michigan. We now have ninety percent of the population in K-12, in public ed, and ten percent in charter. Charter is growing, public ed is dropping. Overall, it won't be dropping. Another indicator we're watching for. And then the MIB service fund, it's looking stable, but there's lots of buts to this one. So lots of bullets on here. What this really means is, they keep moving money around. So for example, in the last three years, the main return for the fund to make money to cover was at eight percent. They didn't hit eight percent return on passive income for years. They lowered it to seven percent. That cost a hundred and seventy-two, actually, it's the hundred million that you don't see. And then they did another one called pension two, which is a defined benefit hybrid 401K. That cost us forty-two million. Then they lowered it last year from seven percent to six point eight because they weren't even hitting seven percent returns. So they keep changing the assumptions. Bottom line is, billion dollars a year comes off the top of schooling, just the fund or retirement system for school employees. So here's the scary graph. Where you see the yellow jingling on the right-hand, on the left-hand side, that's a current cumulative rate. For anyone who really wants to pay attention, that's how many rates that Danielle and I have to configure into the system for all the employees. There used to be two when I started in this business thirty years ago. There are now some excess of twenty rates, combinations thereof. We're at thirty-nine percent roughly where that yellow dips to the left-hand side. We've already told it's going to go up two to three percentage points, up to around forty-two, forty-three percent. You see the, that line is the projection of what's needed and the payment to make the retirement fund hold over all of its commitments is going to take to twenty thirty-nine, twenty more years. And when fully gets funded, there'll be four billion dollars extra for schools. So stick around, because in twenty years, we'll have lots of money.
Coincide, summer leaves the board, right?
We'll have lots of money in twenty years. So, are there risks? Sure. A lot of it, we just watched, we can, it's federal, it's trade policy, it's international, it's the economy in the growth, it's monetary policy. All that stays away from us, but it does affect us in the way of sales tax and property tax that drive the school aid fund. We haven't seen Governor's Senate or House budget, so we're still waiting for that. Just to summarize, we're kind of in that February period, watching for her release of her budget, though she indicated in her State of the State speech last week, we kind of got a glimpse of what she's going for. Subpoint. So, remember she said she's going to go bond for two and a half billion dollars, or three and a half billion dollars for roads. The need is two and a half billion dollars a year. On those bonds, the three and a half billion, guess how much money the general fund's going to have to pay over the next twenty-five years? Eight hundred and fifty million dollars just in interest at two and a half percent on three and a half billion dollars. Those who are around in Engler days, guess what we're still paying off the general fund? Bonds at Engler, administration went out to do the roads, but we're still paying principal interest on it some twenty-five years later. So it sounds like a fix, but again, it drags on our general fund, which has been dragged on the school aid fund. So we'll keep working, watching, build our budgets, meet with our budget managers in March, come back for the board in April, come back to the budget managers, the board today if we have better numbers, and then bring the recommended balanced budget. Questions?
Okay, moving into our action items. In our three-point grouping tonight, we have the approval of January fifteenth, twenty-twenty minutes. Scheduled special meeting on November twelfth, twenty-twenty at seven AM. And then the second reading of adoption on policy twelve forty, evaluation of superintendent, fourteen twenty, school administrator evaluation, thirty-one, forty-two, probationary teachers, and thirty-two, twenty, professional staff evaluation. Anyone wish to remove any of the items from the consent group? Hearing not, do I have?
I'll make a motion with the reading in a minute if you weigh in. If the consensus on the vote is to be approved as presented.
Support. Okay, I have nomination and support. Okay, Mr. Hagadon.
Aye.
Mr. Nolan.
Aye.
Mrs. Sutnam, says aye. Motion carries. Okay, then we have the first reading of policy twenty-four, thirty-one, program in our scholastic athletics.
Remove the policy twenty-four, thirty-one program for scholastic athletics. I'll support that.
Okay, nomination and support. Any discussion? Okay, hearing not. Hagadon.
Aye.
Mr. Nolan. Mrs. Sutnam, says aye. Motion carries. Okay, that brings us to board member communication.
I was able to attend Willy Monca's, same night as you, Mrs. Sutnam, and I have to say, it was awesome. They did an amazing job and congrats to those that worked on that and helped them a lot of work. And I just want to thank our candidates for being here today.
Well, I feel bad, I had the opportunity to go into the play with my old friend, it's her first experience going to one of our plays, and it's better than last year's, to say that. Every year, I'm amazed, I think that they can't do better than they did the year before, and somehow they do. And to the candidates, thank you. Mr. Nolan and I know what's going through your brains. We've both been where you guys are at, and thank you for your interest, so.
I just want to stick up for those people that were in plays years past. I don't know that any place does serve better than another one, they're just different.
We're not going back that far.
That's right. No, the creativity is exhibited by our kids. The kids, the staff, I mean, it's a huge production, and a lot goes into it, and I find myself being more and more able, and I think everyone in this room appreciates those. It is amazing how much work goes into making something easy. And all of the behind-the-scenes, you know, detail and the hours that are put in for every play, the sports that you name, it's incredible. I was at the game in Oxford, and it was interesting, and I very much appreciate the fact that there's a superintendent game here, it's probably one of the creative best, I like that, I remember some years, a few years ago, doing something like that. Great experience down there, they get it, and I hope that the spirit of giving and, you know, the idea of promoting different charities here continues in our district as well. They kick it off, and he wasn't kidding, he said this is the first of many to the number. It is, it's the first of many in Oxford. And they outpaced the Nolan family, the, their team showed up in pink uniforms today. So, but in any event, they really did it right, and it's sort of inspiration for us to keep going, and I know that we can do more and better in here in our district as well. And what a great partner, great down the road, and, you know, they play nicely in the sandbox, and it's always good to see. It wasn't always the case, and so that was great. And as Mr. Hagadon said, I appreciate all of you for being here. It's not easy to stand up there and try to tell us how you're going to make the district better in seven minutes. Because that's really all we want to hear. We want to know how you're going to make it better, what you're going to do about it, because we're all hoping that you have magic, hold on, because what we've proven over the years, we've done. And as you saw from Mr. Hagadon's presentation, every time that you think you have anal on something, it changes. Every time, even with Matt's superintendent evaluation process, Kim leads us through the process every year, and just about every year, the state then thoughtfully gives us a new evaluation tool and tells us that we have to use it. So, it is quite a thing to get used to, if you're not used to it, it's something that if you hesitate in any way or think you do not have the time to do this, withdraw now. This is not something that I would suggest you do part-time or do lightly. We take this very seriously around here, we always have and we always will. I think everyone here exhibited the right attitude, the right thought process, we're here about the kids. That's all we're here to do. We're not here to promote an agenda, we're not here to do anything. This is the most apolitical board I've ever been a part of. I hope it always stays that way. And this is about the kids. So thank you all for showing an interest. If, I mean, we don't know, heck, I just met half of you here tonight. If you're not chosen, there are several of us that will not be running again, you've served long and hard, and it's time for new blood and fresh faces. If you are not chosen to fill the vacant seat, please run in the hall. This is something that's very important to all of us, it's really important to me, and I want to know when I go, that somebody good's sitting in my seat. So thank you again, and I really appreciate all your input.
Thank you. I echo the same thing. The day was absolutely amazing, so proud of everyone that put time and effort into that production, it was beautiful. And also, I want to thank one more time, you guys for coming tonight. I know it's difficult to look at us and, like Mr. Nolan said, tell us everything we want to improve in seven minutes, it's difficult. But appreciate all of your comments that you shared with us this evening. And I just wanted to share one other piece of information. So here's a great opportunity for our school district's third graders to work with the community, the road commission. So they are having, trying to promote work zone safety. So they're asking all the third graders in Willpeere County, so not just our district, but all the districts in Willpeere County, for the third graders to develop what they think would be to articulate what does work zone safety and a sign look like. And they're going to pick one sign, one third grader from each of the districts to turn it into a sign for them to have as an award. So I think that's a pretty cool opportunity to engage our students with the community and also learn about something really important as, you know, safety out there on our roads. So I just wanted to mention that today.
And I got that email as well, and forwarded it to Mrs. Bradford and our K-5 principal group, that they engage our staff and working with the kids, help them maybe produce those projects if they're so inclined, so great opportunity.
Okay, so where's Taylor Wanton?
Thank you very much, Madam President. Don't have much to say today, I wanted to thank Ms. Teddy and Janie Lee for another engagement, but they did a very nice job in the presentation, and they've done a wonderful job leading that program for our district. To our candidates, I want to echo what Mike said about can only choose one of you, and there's going to be vacant seats here, many vacant seats, this board will look very different next January. We are losing a collective forty-five years of experience with the three members that will not be seeking office again. That's a tremendous blow in and of itself, but there's also three members that have made significant contributions to our district. So I was really encouraged that I, I wrote down almost every word everybody said, I was really impressed at the depth of understanding about a lot of the issues that we face, or face with and are challenged to find solutions for. It also appears as though everybody that spoke this evening has a pretty solid understanding of what the role of the board members is, right? Because that's a unique understanding as well, but there are many folks that don't know what the Board of Education does. And so for you to come in here this evening with the depth, the knowledge, and the command of the issues was really impressive. So, we can only pick one, and if that doesn't happen to be you, we would really encourage you committing to a campaign in November, because we need qualified and committed people. So, just by sitting here for almost two hours, you've proven you're committed, so come back for more, right? Thank you very much.
Okay, great.
Support.
Wow, we're doing it with the seniority thing? Do you want to delay the German?
He's not here for a reason.
Okay, Mr. Hagadon.
Hi.
Mr. Nolan. Mrs. Sutnam, says aye. Motion carries.
You got to hang these up in your offices.